Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting, recorded November 2nd, 2021.
Five o'clock, we'll call the Portage County Board to order. Roll call.
We have seventeen supervisors attending in person, three attending remotely. We have three excuse Supervisor Lattick, Neville, and Gifford, and one vacant. With a total of twenty present.
Tonight, we are going to forego the civic clerk because we have a number of supervisors that did not bring their tablets. We have some others that are on phones, and we have a full agenda and to try and expedite it. Unless we get into something that's tied up, we're gonna try and move things along quicker, so.
Did you see that, Lee? Mildred just came in.
Mildred just came in. And pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Moore.
Thank you. Tonight, as I sit here and give my last invocation as the county board supervisor, I have reflected on the last three years, and it hasn't been easy. I've cried, I've been called controversial, and at times even felt unsafe. But I have gotten up and continued just because, just like the rest of you, I love this community and know that good tension and being uncomfortable can bring us closer to the community we want to build. When all of us ran for office, we all knew that we would put our hearts, our mind, and our bodies on the line, just like many of our ancestors have in the past. Each and every one of us have impacted this community, and most importantly, we have developed new relationships and improved concurrent relationships. As I prepare to leave my seat, my heart is heavy. I worry about the unheard voices in marginalized communities and those most vulnerable. This past year has shown us as citizens, shown us how citizens have had to choose between having their voices heard and their own personal health and safety. Today, I call upon my ancestors and the spirits of this land that we're currently occupying to guide us and guide this governing board, guide us to make the best decisions for the residents of Portage County. Bless us with protection and health as we enter into the cold season and still surviving this pandemic. Please remind all of us that we cannot let those most impacted continue to survive us as we are struggling to survive ourselves. Thank you all for being a part of my journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Review and approval of October 12th, 2021 minutes. Motion by Dubek, seconded by Barry Jakowski. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Correspondence.
County Clerk Philin, out of county resolution.
Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time with such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair as set forth in Roberts Rules of Order. Anybody from the public like to speak, wish to speak? Thank you. Twenty twenty-two budget, public hearing. Adjourn the annual meeting to hold a public hearing. Take a motion to, motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Reese, Reaser. So we are in the public hearing. You're in the public hearing, and so does anybody wanna speak or have anything to say in regards to the budget? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Wow, that's, that's great, okay. So then I will take a motion to reconvene back to our annual meeting. So a motion by Supervisor Reese, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're back. Resolutions and ordinance, adoption of the twenty twenty-two Portage County budget.
Resolution number one fifty-two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution adopts the twenty twenty-two county budget.
Motion by Dodge, seconded by Rakowski. Discussion. Didn't have any before. If there's no discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, adoption of the property tax levy appointment for the twenty twenty-one tax levy payable in twenty twenty-two.
Resolution number one fifty-three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes the twenty twenty-one property tax levy payable in twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Rakowski, seconded by Dodge. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, Town of Dewey Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment.
Resolution number one fifty-four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a comp plan amendment and zoning ordinance map amendment in the Town of Dewey.
I'll take a motion. Motion by Gussel, seconded by Dubek. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, Town of Stockton Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Conkle property.
Resolution number one fifty-five, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a comp plan amendment and zoning ordinance map amendment in the Town of Stockton.
Moved by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Planning and zoning likes their paper. Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Johnson property.
Resolution number one fifty-six, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a zoning ordinance map amendment for the Johnson property.
Thankful Larry's here. Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Borcher property.
Resolution number one fifty-seven, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a zoning ordinance map amendment for the Borcher property.
Motion by Supervisor Matt Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify a little bit, I heard you mention that planning and zoning likes their paper. One of the reasons that is, not only does staff like to be thorough, but, which is definitely a good thing, but in the past, people have questioned why there wasn't certain amount of information in there for these situations. So I beg your pardon and hope that everybody understands.
Yep, I think we've got it all covered now, though. If there's any other, no further discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, resolution for snowmobile trail aid, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two season.
Resolution number one fifty-eight, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Park Commission. This resolution authorizes the Parks Director or Trail Coordinator to apply for financial aid for snowmobile trail maintenance.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick. There we go, we got you on the board, Dave. Seconded by Supervisor Gussel. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, approving and authorizing QBE as the stop-loss provider for Portage County Health Insurance Plan for twenty twenty-two.
Resolution number one fifty-nine, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution authorizes and approves QBE as the stop-loss provider for twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Supervisor Zastro, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Just so everybody, QBE is the name of it, it's not abbreviated, so, because we always get tripped up on that one, so. Supervisor Rakowski.
Mr. Chair, we have an amendment. It's two pages into that item in your packet. It's under the fourth whereas, under stop-loss carrier. It should read with updated numbers, a one-year agreement with a twenty twenty-two estimated fee of one million fifty-one thousand four oh eight, based on the current enrollment of four hundred and twenty-three employees, not to exceed seventy-eight dollars seventy-five cents per single plan per month, and two hundred and seventy-two dollars and one cents per family plan per month. And in the final sentence of that same paragraph, it should read, this is an estimated eight point three five percent increase in annual premium over the twenty twenty-one annual premium.
So we have an amendment made by Supervisor Larry Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion. So everybody understands we ended up with a much better number, which is, is great. So, if there's no further discussion on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Back, back to the original resolution as amended. Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to thank our HR Director, our consultant Willis Towers Watson. Originally, it was gonna be a thirteen percent. We ended up with an eight point three five. That's not the whole story. Other places similar to us, other self-insurers are looking at a forty to fifty percent rate increase because of the people we work with, and I guess it probably trickles down right to our employees staying healthy and following the wellness path. So we're very lucky to be at eight point three five and not forty-eight point three five.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Back to the resolution as amended. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve. Elected officials' compensation for April twenty twenty-two through April twenty twenty-six term for county executive.
Resolution number one sixty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution sets the compensation for the county executive for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six term.
I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Somebody else?
Julie, seconded by Supervisor Merle. Discussion. Supervisor Pataki.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend the recommended county executive salary from ninety-six thousand to the same starting date of April ninth twenty-two, and a salary of one hundred eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents, with a two percent increase in years twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. If the county chooses to go above the two percent increase, the county executive will receive the same increase as the other department head will receive.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Robbie. Discussion. Supervisor Pataki.
Mr. Chair, I would like to first thank the county executive, county board chairman, and all the elected officials and department heads, and all the county workforce for all their patience and hard work during the COVID period. Portage County residents should be proud, as I am with our county workforce. On your desk, you should have found one sheet of paper. On one side, it says the Portage County Department had twenty twenty-two salaries, and two, on the side, a McGrath salary schedule with the words "should be" printed on it. The one with the twenty twenty-two salaries listed department head director salaries for all department heads making one hundred thousand dollars or more. You will also see in parentheses, the market value of executive salary average of Wisconsin State Executive salary. The twenty twenty-two executive salary from the should-be McGrath twenty-one schedule and the McGrath recommended to a minimum ten percent less than the average market salary. With the HR recommended salary of ninety-six thousand starting for nineteen twenty-two, with a two percent raise each following year, it would take until four twenty-one twenty-five for the executive to reach one hundred and one thousand five hundred and thirteen thousand, which is the McGrath recommended salary to a minimum and ten percent less than the market value. The HR salary for four twenty-five would be one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Supervisors Astro.
I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
They can wait. In your packet, you have a, therefore, the recommendation is to increase the county executive salary to a minimum of one hundred and one thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars, ten percent less than the average market salary. Salary increases for three subsequent years should be at minimum two percent. The consultant would like to be more aggressive on the salary increases, however, the inflation factor is still unknown to whether this is a short or longer term anomaly. Also, in the third paragraph, there's other factors for consideration, other elected officials' compensation inflation. In reviewing the compensation of other elected officials, most are close to our overall salary of the county executive. Further, the lower county executive salary will begin to cause compression of other elected and appointed department heads artificially lowering the salary to cause recruitment retention problems. The, I took the average of the eight department heads who are making more than a hundred thousand dollars, and it comes up to a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's the average. And with the recommendation that I put in for the one hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-four thirty is below that average.
Thank you. Supervisors Astro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, you know, we were down this road with our previous executive discussing these type of things, and I would have hoped that we might have resolved it back then. And if we don't do something, and I'm in support of Stan's amendment here to this, to increase it and take care of it now and be done with it, then we can get back on a schedule of two percent increases and not have to deal with this again. Otherwise, we're just kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hearing the amendments here on the floor, I'm a little disappointed in some of the fellow supervisors that they didn't show up at the HR meeting that was well advertised when we discussed this there. Some reasons that the HR committee came up with the numbers that we came up with. I took all the counties that have executives in the state that gave us information. We omitted Milwaukee and Racine because they did not provide us any information. We are the smallest county with an executive in the state. If you take our net new growth against the average, we are thirty-six percent less than any other counties with an executive. So we do not have the new money coming in. If you take our average income, which you can get from the green book, everybody has their WCA green book, I believe is about, we're about sixteen percent less than any other county. If you take all the averages of all the counties with executives and take sixteen percent less, you come up with ninety-six thousand dollars. What tells our picture, tells the story more, what paints a better picture than the average income of counties? So if we're gonna look at average executive incomes, average everybody incomes, we're right at ninety-six thousand. And that's what we felt was fair. And that is still a seven thousand dollar increase. You know, if we're gonna start throwing these large percentages out there, maybe we should do it for all employees.
I agree.
Supervisor Robbie.
Yeah, I'm looking at the numbers of the amounts that we pay our directors, and I have a general idea what their responsibilities are, and I think their pay is spot on or low, given what they're asked to do. And I don't have the history of why we have an executive with substantially lower than department heads, but on the surface, it just doesn't seem right that we have our lead person was making significantly less than our directors. And as far as the information just given, I certainly appreciate that, but I'm wondering if we applied the same factors to our other positions, the director positions, would their positions fall in line, or would they also be considered to be overpaid at that amount? Again, I feel overpaying our directors is spot on, if not low, and I would like to see our executive who's responsible for supervising them to be paid at a comparable measure. Thank you.
Supervisor Dodge.
I understand the rationale doing this by population, but quite frankly, I think the executive in all the counties probably have pretty much the same responsibilities, and they're evaluating and directing the budgets for all of these same departments. Maybe they're addressed with different names, but the responsibilities, I would bet, are pretty much the same. And so I am in favor of this amendment.
Supervisor Splinter.
I was kind of amazed at the amount of salary that all the directors do have as opposed to who they report to. If this was at Sentry where I used to work, and a VP had ten directors, and he was a, he wasn't getting paid as much as all the ten directors, there would be something out of line there. But in general, a county exec, a good county exec, which I think we have, I really do, I can't fault them hardly. A good county exec will save your whole budget, probably a million dollars. I'm just guessing, okay, just throwing out there. A bad county exec getting you into legal tangles and whatever else could cost you a million dollars. So what we're talking about for, in this amendment, isn't out of line with the kind of budget that he handles and the number of people that report to him. That's just my take on the whole thing. Thank you.
Supervisor Soik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate everyone's comments. I just want to point out that this would be a twenty-five percent increase. Twenty-five percent. We gave our employees for the county two percent. I understand the CEO of Sentry, Skyward, however you want to bring in the conversation. Our county executive is an elected official, and prior to having a county executive, the county chair in this board, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was able to take care of those duties. Again, it is twenty-five percent increase. I was asked to look at this. I looked at it, and knowing that we gave our county employees two percent, and as Supervisor Zastro said, you looked at this with the last county exec. I don't know who talks to their constituents. I don't know who here talks to the county employees, but I do. And morale throughout the county is low. And when they, when this board granted a pay raise last time, people were not happy. And again, this is twenty-five percent for a public servant. I just want everyone to know, let that sink in, a twenty-five percent pay increase, and you told the employees that they were only worth two percent. So let that sink in, sink in. Thank you very much.
Supervisor, Moral, sorry.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate what Supervisor Jakowski did in the calculations and trying to come to a nice middle ground, but I just think that, I really appreciate Stan's opinions on this, and that if what we're doing is we're kind of trying to right-size the executive position in line with the other department heads. So it really isn't about getting a twenty-five percent raise. And I think that when we, we have McGrath get a professional, outside, independent opinion, and then we never seem to want to listen to what they say. And I think that, you know, they do this all day, they do this for states and counties, and I just think we should trust their opinion, and I think their dollar amount, what Stan's proposing, puts us just right in line with other department heads, and it just seems like a really nice conclusion. So I'm in support of Stan's opinion.
Supervisor Hahn.
I'd like to thank Supervisor Splinter for pointing out the reality of supervising people who are making more money than you are. But I also think that his very legitimate point that a county executive could cost us a lot of money if they make mistakes. And we have held our county executive to fairly high standards, and probably saving us a lot of money. I think that twenty-five percent is a misleading use of statistics. I would, I'm very appreciative of Supervisor Pataki and the homework that he did, and in complete support of this adjustment and this amendment.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
I guess I would thank everybody for their comments and thoughts on this, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to speak. But we do also have to remember we're talking about an elected official, and we don't know who may hold that position. You're just talking about a good county executive. We don't know who's gonna hold that. So to use that analogy really doesn't hold water either. And I tend to think along the lines of Supervisor Soik of the same thing. We have told our employees they're only worth two percent for an increase, and we're having a hard time retaining employees the way it is. And to tell our employees they're worth two percent, and that we're going to give an executive, an elected position, twenty-five percent, when we don't know who's gonna hold that position, seems a little outrageous. Thank you, everybody.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not gonna argue either, either way on this, but I just wanted to flush out those numbers a little bit. If my numbers are correct, using what's on this page, it's only a seven percent increase to the first year, a twelve percent increase to the, to the final year. So I just want to make sure that... So I just want to make sure that we have those numbers straight before we make any decisions based on that. Thank you.
Supervisor Reeser.
We're trying to get everybody to give a chance. We want to acquire and retain the caliber of the current county executive. We're going to have to pay the standard salary for our county executive. We're spending a lot of time on this this evening. I think Stan's motion is extremely reasonable, the rate of pay is extremely reasonable, and I think we should just move on.
Supervisor Lattick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, our county executive is, if you do an organizational chart, he is the top person in the county. Everyone in the county except for elected officials, he is ultimately responsible for. And I don't care what percentage is, if it was fifty percent, we have not paid that position in the past at the appropriate rate. So we need to make this adjustment. I'm in totally favor of Stan's amendment. I think when McGrath said the median salary is one-eleven, six-sixty-four, that's exactly what it should be, and I was surprised that the HR committee did not come back with that in the first place. Now, normally, I would trust the work in the committees, but to have this position at ninety-six or ninety-seven thousand dollars is totally wrong. I think, I think we just need to adjust it. We have plenty of money, and we're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars in the capital. We can, we can take this up to fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to make a rate. Thank you.
Supervisor Soik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify a few things that I've said and I've heard. Eighty-nine thousand to one-hundred-and-eleven is not funny numbers. It is twenty-five percent. And the motion is on the floor to take it to one-hundred-and-eleven dollars, not ninety-six, which would be the seven percent and the twelve percent. So I just want to make it perfectly clear, there's an amendment on the floor to make it one-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars, and this isn't funny numbers. It is exactly twenty-five percent. Thank you.
Supervisor Pataki.
Yeah, I know. In McGrath's letter, it also states, in the one, four paragraph, it says, "At this time CPIU is around five percent. Couple this with the employment shortage, Wisconsin counties are increasing their compensation schedule. Jefferson County, for example, just announced they are placing three percent on their step salary schedule in January twenty-two, and then another two percent in July." So I think maybe we should be looking at that also. Also, the McGrath, the should-be state, now, if, that is a, you know, we've got two recommendations from McGrath. One is the one-hundred-one thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen, and the one, and on the should-be page that you should have in front of you, which was according to this, drafted in twenty-twenty-one. McGrath states that on four-nineteen-twenty-two, the county executive should be at one-hundred-and-six thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine, up to one-hundred-and-thirteen thousand on four-nineteen-twenty-twenty-five. So why is there such a disparity? Also, why is there a should-be on that page from, I have no idea where it came from, but I would think that somebody from the Human Resources could answer that question.
Laura, would you like to answer that question for Stan? Or can you?
Could you repeat the question? I'm not quite sure I understood the whole question.
This page here, all right, and it states that, on top it says, I'm sorry. On top it says, "Salary based on method used for clerk of courts and sheriff for twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-two term after county clerk and registered deed for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four term of office." So it's the same thing, he would, McGrath drew the same method for, for both the sheriffs and clerks and registered deeds as for the county executive. But it has the county executive on four-nineteen-twenty-two at one-hundred-and-six thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine. So how do we jump, go from one-hundred-and-one to one-hundred-and-six? Which one is, which one are they putting up or to hold up?
So on this sheet, one-hundred-and-one, you're asked, I don't see one-hundred-and-one anywhere, sorry.
No, that's, that is the salary that the McGrath has in our, in our book, all right? It says, "Proposed salary for McGrath on twenty-twenty-one recommendation is one-hundred-one thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars."
Okay, so the sheet that must have been handed out, I'm sorry, I didn't receive a copy of it, so this is the first time seeing of it. The back sheet that you're referring to on the spreadsheet was in the initial HR committee packet. This is what I calculated based on how we had done previous elected official salaries before the county executive. So the clerk of courts, the sheriff, and the register of deeds. So how this calculation came up is the McGrath schedule, which is not in any of your packets tonight, it was in a previous HR committee packet. It was from the McGrath actual initial calculations. And that was step four of her initial calculations, when she came out with the calculations back how many years ago. So that is how all other, all these other elected officials were calculated. We took step four on that document, plugged it in in between, and then did two percent off of that for every following year. So it's based on a document that was back from when we did the salary schedule, if that explains the one-hundred-and-four. So that's a document that you might not have before you, but that was in a previous HR committee packet that came out with the initial conversation when we did elected official salaries, even before we implemented the salary schedule for our staff.
According to this sheet, it said the twenty-twenty-one McGrath schedule, that had to be this year.
No, those are two separate boxes. So it's twenty-twenty-one current term is how you should be reading that, is the eighty-nine thousand, six-eighty-three, twenty-three, then McGrath schedules step four. That's referencing the one-hundred-and-four, four-oh-one. That was when she came out with the schedule a number of years ago. So there's no year on that one.
Did the HR committee see this?
This was in the HR committee packets from the first meeting that we had discussed this.
So this would have been a recommendation from you to them?
This was a calculation that I had done after talking with Chair Rakowski on what should we put as an initial conversation in the packet, and I said, "This is the method that I understood was what we were using for elected officials up to this point."
All right.
Supervisor Moa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Laura.
I just wanted to just speak out and say I'm in support of Supervisor Pataki's amendment, and I do believe in right sizing. I don't believe in giving increases to elected officials, but I believe in right sizing. The other thing to really think about is beyond whoever's in this seat. If we want the right candidates to be running for this position in the future, we actually also have to make sure that we are compatible. And unlike the rest of us, who are very, very part-time on this, the, I don't want to say very, very part-time, but we, we're not required to be at the office more than eight hours a day. This is a full-time position for a county executive, but I think we have to look at that and make sure that the head of our county, like, is right-sized. So I don't see this as an increase just because we're increasing wages. We're right sizing all of our departments and pay equity, there's pay equity there so that we can move forward with the two percent increases in the future.
Thank you. Supervisors Astro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things, I want it to be known that I do support all employees, all public employees, and it's not feasible to give four-hundred-plus people a ten, fifteen percent raise, twenty-five percent raise, if you will. That's just the reality of it. But on the HR committee, I did vote no for the, the resolution that's being presented. I thought McGrath was what we should have gone with, and that's why I'm in support of this amendment. And to the point of, yes, it's an elected position, and sure, could we get somebody totally unqualified that's going to make the eighty-nine, the ninety-six, the one-hundred-and-eleven? Does it matter from eighty-nine to one-hundred-and-eleven? If we got a bad person elected, they got elected, okay, so let's not, that be a roadblock from us moving forward with this. It shouldn't be. It's not going to prevent the bad potential executive from getting elected. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else that hasn't spoken? I think we had some very good discussion on this. There was, I'm back and forth on this, I, I can see a lot of points on both sides of this. And the one thing that seemed to stick with me was the fact that, I've always said this to HR committee, is to be consistent, and we need to be within that range. And someone had made the statement that it was eighty-nine, and when I heard that and thought about it, over all these years, it should have been higher, and what we have saved will more than compensate for what this increase is over the years. And I do believe that it should be higher than the ninety-six thousand. What that number is, I would like, I don't know if there are other people other than McGrath. I wouldn't say, I personally feel warm and fuzzy with McGrath. I think there's other ones out there that do it. So I tend to agree with Stan and the rest of us that support this. So Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did ask Chair Rakowski to put it on the agenda for future agenda item, that we discuss and evaluate our process and how we give raises to elected officials, and come up with something that's standardized, something that is a guiding mores that we, we believe are the best fit for our county, so that we do not ever have to have this discussion again, because I've been on the committee since the beginning, and every two years it comes up, how are we going to pay this person or that person? And as far as I'm concerned, this committee is doing the work and trying to fix the sins of the past, and if we can fix the sin, we can move forward and have a standardized policy that would be the best fit for our county. And I'd also like to apologize to Supervisor Soik, I stand corrected, it is a twenty-five percent increase. I was calculating the numbers on the page, so apologize to Mr. Soik, and I wasn't accusing him of funny numbers, I was just using the numbers on the page, so, thank you.
So we have, we have an amendment before us to increase the salary for the executive to one-hundred-and-eleven thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars, and did you say thirty-five cents, Stan?
Yeah.
Do we need to go to thirty-five cents, or can we just round it? You know, I guess twelve percent, not thirty-five.
One-hundred-and-eleven thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and thirty cents.
I'm sorry, thirty cents, okay. And then the two percent every year after that, correct, Stan? Correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Supervisors Astro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to call for a roll call vote, if I may.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye, and the clerk will call a roll.
Dodge.
Hang on, Dave, until your name's called.
Dodge is aye. Aye, okay. Gifford.
No.
Neville.
Aye.
Haga.
Aye.
Gussel.
Aye.
Barry Jakowski.
Nay.
Pataki.
Aye.
Lattick.
Aye.
Rakowski.
Nay.
Zastro.
Aye.
Martenson.
Aye.
Splinter.
Aye.
Duback.
Nay.
Robbie.
Aye.
Hahnle.
Aye.
Matt Jakowski.
Nay.
Morrow.
Aye.
Madine.
No.
Moa.
Aye.
Aye. Maresi. Uh, Jankowski.
Aye.
Reeser.
Aye.
Okay, we have sixteen in favor, seven against, amendment passed.
Okay, back to the original resolution as amended. If there's no further discussion, Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just hope the sixteen people that when we come back with a salary schedule adjustment, because we're to that point, we're already behind in our salary schedule. The way the labor market is right now, I hope that those same sixteen people will send a salary schedule adjustment that we need to do. Just the other day, I was talking, I was at a meeting with some business people in the area, and they are starting to hire laborers at thirty dollars an hour starting rate. That's ten dollars an hour over what our county highway department makes for laborers. So that's something to think about when we have to adjust salary schedules. I hope all sixteen of you will join me at that point in time in voting to fully adjust it.
Supervisors Astro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have a roll call vote again.
All right. So all those in favor of the resolution as amended, say aye, and the clerk will call a roll.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Nay.
Robbie.
Yay.
We get the vote once.
Pataki.
Aye.
Haga.
Aye.
Lattick.
Aye.
Rakowski.
Nay.
Martenson.
Aye.
Reeser.
Aye.
Hahnle.
Aye.
Duback.
Nay.
Matt Jakowski.
Nay.
Moa.
Aye.
Splinter.
Aye.
Soik.
No.
Jankowski.
Aye.
Zastro.
Aye.
Gifford.
Nay.
Maresi.
Aye.
Gussel.
Aye.
Dodge.
Yes.
Neville.
Aye.
And Morrow.
Aye.
We have seventeen in favor, six against, one excused. Resolution adopted.
Number thirteen, amending ordinance three-point-one-point-four-seven per diem mileage payments and attendance to establish compensation for the vice chair of the board in the case of the absence or disability of the chair of the board.
Resolution number one-sixty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution amends ordinance three-point-one-four-seven to establish compensation for the vice chair in the absence of the county board chair.
Motion by Rakowski, seconded by Barry Jakowski. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Just for my own curiosity, how did this come about? Did we, how did we do it before? What did we do before? Or was it just something that never came up?
Supervisor Rakowski.
This came up in-
Use your mic, please.
This came up in HR when we were discussing kind of the attendance policy, but also as far as what happens if, if the chair becomes, as it stated, ill or unable to work, and how do we do that? And I know Chair Haga did fill in before, and it was a good time probably to look at how we handle that.
And if I may, Supervisor Rakowski, was this something that there wasn't policy for, or was vague?
Yeah, I would consider this kind of a housekeeping thing, is to put it in place. I'm not looking to get rid of Chair Haga anytime soon, so.
Not soon.
Be careful. It just seemed to be time to get it done.
Thank you.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Yeah, I guess it was brought up during discussion in HR, as Larry said. And I actually kind of brought it up because as I was researching county board salaries, county board chair salaries, executive salaries, one of the things I ran across of in a lot of our surrounding counties and counties here in the north central region, a lot of them, probably 70% had something in there that the county board vice chair would, if, would have to take over, would be fairly compensated. So, I don't know why we did half and not full, but that's what we went with.
And I do believe when I had to step in in that position, if I attended meetings or whatever, I just green-cheated it or whatever, was the way it was. It was the same, I guess, but it was just a different way of doing it. So, this actually cleans up some of those loose ends, so. Supervisor Dodge.
So, then, other than death of the county board chair, while you're incapacitated, are you receiving your salary in addition to the first vice chair?
Yes.
And it doesn't seem to be a problem to add that financial burden to the county.
Laura is shaking her head that that is correct, and I would continue, the county board chair would continue to get their salary.
I assumed such.
Yes.
Chair.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you. Laura, would the, if the county executive became incapacitated, would they continue to receive their salary?
Yes.
Sure.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Same question?
Same question.
Okay. Boy, you two think a lot alike. Any other discussion with that? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14. 5% annual adjustment to the 2022 Portage County salary schedules.
Resolution number 162, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution approves a 1.25% annual adjustment for the 2022 salary schedule.
Supervisor Larry Rakowski. Supervisor Maresi. No discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15. Authorizing property inland marine and crime insurance coverage through travelers for 2022.
Resolution number 163, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution approves the renewal of property coverage with travelers for 2022.
Motion by Supervisor Laddick, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. Supervisor Dodge.
Technical amendment, please. The fourth whereas, premium quotation for the county's total values for property exposure is not 129,174, but it is 104,990. Inland marine is 1338. Crime is 4,221, totaling 122,249, rather than the 146,433 for the fiscal year 2022. And the next whereas should read, whereas the premium for the property coverage decreased due to an increase in deductible from 2,500 to 10,000.
I have a technical amendment by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Larry Rakowski. We have been furnished a copy here for the clerk. Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
What did our, our premium went down to what again?
122.
For all, for property exposure was 104,990. For a total of 122,249.
And, and the main reason was the deductible went from 2,500 to 10,000. That's why it went down.
Now, now, looking at that, it takes us only two and a half, so three incidences, and we make up our, our premium savings.
Jenny, would you address that?
Sure, we looked at history of our claims since 2016. And to generate this is roughly over $24,000 of savings on the premium in comparison to what they were going to charge for 2022. If we look at the claim loss for 2016 through 2021 thus far, the largest increase in deductible costs would have been 10,000. So, the worst-case scenario in our history that we've had would have been a $14,000 savings. In 16, it was 7,500 additional. 2017, it was just over 3,900. 18 and 19 would have been zero, there would have been no change. 2020 would have been 8,242, and then 10,000 for this year.
Thank you, that's what I needed to know, because that seemed like an awful close number for an awful large deductible increase.
Correct, and the discussion that we did have at Finance Committee, and the reason we revisited it was because of our history. And, you know, the thing about insurance is, is insurance. We don't know what's going to happen. We can look at our history, and we can look at our losses, can't guarantee this for the future. But based on our history, it looked like it was in our best interest. You know, if we look at 2016, we were paying a premium of $84,000 on the property side. We look at 2022, it was 129,000. It's grown drastically, and this is a way for us to save money based on our experience.
Anybody else have any questions? With that, we have a motion and a second on an amendment. If there's no further discussion on the amendment, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment carries. Back to the original resolution as amended. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 16. Authorizing liability coverage through Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Company for 2022.
Resolution number 164, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution approves the renewal of liability coverage with Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance for 2022.
Motion by Supervisor Larry Rakowski. Seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. All those in favor with?
Hang on.
I'm sorry.
We have an amendment.
Why wouldn't we?
In the third whereas, it says the premium cost for 2022 is 341,064, should be struck, and the new number be 323,348. And in the sixth whereas, the total cost for 2022 fiscal year, 398,784, should be struck, and it should read 381,068.
So, all of these amendments so far have had a trend of reduction, which is a good thing. So, Lee is able to put it up on the screen for the folks at home, everybody else. But, uh, uh, the second was by Stan, was it? No. Oh, so I need a second for this Supervisor Dodge, seconded this amendment. Did my amendments crossed? There's no further discussion on this amendment. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment carries. Back to the original resolution as amended. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 17. Acceptance of law enforcement drug trafficking response grant for the State of Wisconsin Department of Justice and corresponding budget adjustment.
Resolution number 165, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance and Public Safety Emergency Management Committees. This resolution approves the acceptance of grant funds from the DOJ and the budget adjustment for the sheriff's office. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Don Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. There's no discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 18. Approving and authorizing acceptance of donated funds and a 2021 budget adjustment for new bulletproof flak vests and helmets for the sheriff's office special response team.
Resolution number 166, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance and Public Safety Emergency Management Committees. This resolution approves the acceptance of donated funds and the budget adjustment for the sheriff's office. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Don Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion. No discussion? Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question, who's being this generous in our community to donate $80,000?
They don't want to be known.
But a good legal kid.
A lot of good, a lot of good people. Could be anybody. All right. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you to Anonymous, that's a great gift, so. Number 19. Authorizing a 2021 budget adjustment for sewer service area planning.
Resolution number 167, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Planning and Zoning and Finance Committees. This resolution authorizes a budget adjustment for the Planning and Zoning Department for Sewer Service Area third supermajority vote.
I'll sit here a long time waiting for, so, motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Don Jankowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I only got two more to go here, folks, come on.
I want to know how long you would have sat there.
Number 20. Confirming the appointment of Kim.
Here we go.
Vagera? Kim Vagera as Portage County Health and Human Service Directors.
Resolution number 168, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Health and Human Services Board. This resolution confirms the appointment of Kim Vagario as the HHS director.
Motion by Supervisor Duback, seconded by Supervisor Zastro. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And congratulations, Kim. Uh, number 21.
Get to work.
Authorization for a 2022 contract for over $100,000 for Justice Point, Inc.
Resolution number 169, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Judicial General Government Committee. This resolution authorizes a 2022 contract with Justice Point, Inc.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi. Seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Maybe we could give Kim Varal the opportunity to make a formal introduction? As long as she's here, I'd appreciate that.
I don't know if she's, oh, she is. Oh, stand-ups, you could have helped us out with the pronunciation.
It's Vagero.
Vagero, okay.
Um, yes, I'm thrilled to accept it.
We, I was in on the interview, and it was the first time I had met Kim. And it's, I'm glad to have you on board, and there are big shoes to fill. But we feel that you're very capable of, of doing it, so, good luck.
Yeah, thank you, it's, they are big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Pleasure to have you.
And I see the DA, the DA is here, and the last item was probably what he's here for, the very last thing on the agenda, so. I will take a motion to adjourn. A motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Gusel. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned, thank you.
Didn't have to wait for that one.
A video on this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, StevensPoint.com/videos.